Twenty-sixth, a regular city council meeting. Mayor Castillo is out tonight. Also, Johnny Ray Nieto, Councilman Nieto will also be out. We do have a quorum, Councilor Ortiz, Councilman Jimenez, Councilwoman Karikou. I'm gonna ask the pastor of the Forestville United Methodist Church to lead us in vocation.
God, we are a country that is greatly blessed and we thank you gracious God for not only the blessings that befall us as a nation, but as a state and as a community. We thank you dear Lord for the gift of Forestville, Texas, USA. We ask you gracious God that you help us to rise above the transitory cares of this world. We ask you gracious God that we might align ourselves with your spirit, that we might be better than we are, that we might serve you in peace and with justice in the communities in which we serve. We thank you gracious God for those law enforcement officers and medical personnel and those people dear Lord behind the scenes that take care of our parks and our streets. We're very grateful gracious God for them and for what they do to make this place a better place for all of your children. We lift up to you dear God right now, our city council, and pray gracious God your hand to be upon them and to guide them and the community at large. All these things we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you brother.
Thank you brother.
Please remain standing, I believe we have a Boy Scout?
Eagle Scout.
Eagle Scout. Enrique Montoya will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Good evening.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Under all business we have minutes from January twenty-eighth, February fourth, February eleventh, and February the twenty-fifth. Council, we don't have three council members that were present during these meetings, so I'm gonna ask that we table each item. If we could go to item one A and make a motion to table that. So move. Second, I second. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries four zero, one B. Motion by Jimenez.
Second.
Second by Ortiz, all in favor. Motion carries four zero, one C. Jimenez makes motions, her second.
Second.
Second by Ortiz, all in favor. One D, February the twenty-fifth.
I make a motion.
Motion by Cantu.
Second.
Second by Jimenez, all in favor. Motion carries. You got all those votes, Madam Secretary?
Yes.
Okay. Presentation, under two A, I'm sorry, citizens input, I'm sorry, thanks for reminding me. Please.
Thank you. Good evening council, my name is Sarah Kennedy, I'm resident of Forestville, and I'm here just for a few minutes, the Forestville Mighty Tiger Band is doing their last concert for the year, and I've got a son who's performing, so I've gotta run. But I wanted to say a special thank you to our city manager, I don't see her tonight, I don't know where she is. Is she okay?
Yes, yes.
To our city manager, Mrs. Henrietta Turner, to the operations director, Mr. David Vasquez, to the street department superintendent, Alex Trevino, and other street people, uh, street maintenance people, Andres Hernando and Robert. Last week, there was an issue on my street that needed immediate attention and they got right on it. For some reason, well, y'all know, I live on Railroad Street directly behind the high school auditorium, and the Forestville High School football field is at the end of my street, where it turns right to Ponderosa, I believe. And you know, those little streets back there have recently been repaved. Railroad was supposed to be repaved, but I was told it's too, too bad, it can't be repaved yet, or just gonna keep living with our bad street. But while that was being repaved, somewhere along the line, someone left a five gallon bucket of rubber cement, uh, roof cement, a five, full, five gallon bucket of roof cement, which is a black tarry liquid kinda stuff, and it was set a little off kilter, a little rock, right in the drainage exit from the football field. And you know all the rain we've been having, and now that's an artificial field, so water just gushes out of there. And that full bucket sitting on a tilt was dripping all night long. And it dripped that black tarry roof cement into the drainage water all down my street. I noticed eight o'clock in the morning on my way to work that there was some black tarry mess, not just in front of my yard, all into the grass area of my yard, but my neighbor, Mrs. Mary Ann Reed, she's an elderly widow woman, and the Solis family at the end of the street. And I was concerned, and I said, hmm, I'll have to take care of that later, I had to great deal to work. So on my way back from both to, for my lunch break, I called Henrietta Turner at about twelve-thirty or so, and I said, Henrietta, I'm concerned, I think this may be an emergency, but it looks like some ugly toxic waste kinda stuff, I don't know what it is, kinda appears to be some kinda illegal dumping. So she said, I'll look, I'll look into it. So she did, and she called David Vasquez, and within thirty minutes, forty minutes, they were there, bam. And they looked at it, and they said, yeah, that's bad. And I had already investigated and found the five gallon bucket in, yeah, that's what it is. And so, all the grass for about a four to six inch area, all down the street, was nasty. It was disgusting. And so, within another thirty minutes, that's when Alex Trevino and his crew came up with all the equipment needed to scrape all of the dirt and the contaminated grass, all the way down Railroad Street. And they did it very quickly, they did it very efficiently, and I very much appreciate that. So I wanna give credit where credit is due, and let you guys know that they did a great job, and my neighbors, Mrs. Mary Ann Reed and Jerry Solis's family, we all very much appreciate that that was done. We're also eagerly awaiting for the great news of when our street is gonna be completely arigat, completely arigat, that would be so wonderful.
Hopefully this summer.
Well, I've gotta run to the high school, but thank you very much, I'll have to.
Thank you for the, for those words, Judge.
Obviously, I wanna do the same thing, my name is Bob Turner, resident of the city of Forestville, I'd like this one, and to give a shout out to the Forestville PD, the sheriffs upon the DPS, the partners upon MS personnel, as we all know, Tuesday night a week ago, we had that terrific form, anytime these guys are called, get out in the middle of that and, and take care of business, because it's greatly appreciated, and I think they deserve it, we'll put that on the back.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Right here, yes, service.
You told me how good you keep your country so. I'm Tom Robles, the Godfather of Forestville, not from low, I go to Forestville, no, I'm just kidding. I have a few things that I wanna say here. This weekend, it's a very special weekend, to me at least it is, my more day weekend. And I've lost a lot of friends in combat, and stuff like this, you call me crazy wherever you want, but you know what? This city looks like nothing's going on this weekend. And I mean, there's trash all over the side of the road, the media, the grass hasn't been cut, and, and it's, it's, it's sad that we have five city councilmen, the mayor, the city manager, and we're not doing nothing about it. You go down to one eighty-one by the non-pall right there, and there's piles of trash, you know, branches and stuff, it's been there for about two or three weeks already. And then you go right there by, Bill Meadows, go down the street right there, and you have tires piled up on a bunch of grass on the side of the road. We didn't take no pride in it, it's ours to go. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a weekend that, you know, people probably get up, they're going business, stuff like that, and we shouldn't be setting a, a nice beautiful example here so they can move to here instead of going somewhere else. So it seems like nobody's really concerned about this. And, and another thing is that this weekend, you heard about the runaways that were going on, and the kids shut themselves, I think that the city needs to get involved in schools. They need to get involved in the schools, because it's not too different, the department is all one community. And, and, and I said already last time, and I, I'm not gonna say it again, but those baseball fields that we, we wanna put in there, we need to put something more than just dad for the kids, to keep them busy or keep them, you know, from doing crazy things. But we're not doing that, we're, we're focusing on one thing. We have another problem. Right over here with the senior citizens, they make their meals, they're losing that building there. And I wish the Forestville would get involved and, and, and find a building for those people. Because without meals and wheels for the older folks, I don't know where they're gonna go and do the meals. And, and I think that the city and the city council and all these, 4A and FEDC needs to get involved with them and, and see what, if they can help those people, because they've been doing it for a long time. You know, and it's, it's, there's little things that make a big difference for the older folks, and also to the kids in school. And I think that's very important, because you know, I read a comment this morning, if you're, if you're a Christian, act like one, but you know what, we can't be everywhere, but you know, I think that at least the mayor should go up there and, and talk to some of those kids, and, and maybe try to open up, because we don't have no hotlines here for runaways or whatever, if they got issues at home, where they can go and talk to somebody. You know, they need, like a awareness program for these kids. You know, because I personally don't wanna see my, my son or grandson, or anybody's son, run away, or commit suicide, because you know, they got troubles, and mom and dad are not listening, because they're working, and that's what happens. Mom and dad are working, and these kids, they can't find a love at home, and they gonna find a gang, and, and that's where they find their love at, and they get in trouble. But, like, like I said, I think that, you know, we need to get proactive, there's a lot, a lot of things that we need to do besides baseball fields, you know, that's my thing. Thank you.
Any other citizens comments? And now we'll go on to a presentation. Dwayne Duke from Phelps regarding the 2016 amended operating budget. Mr. Duke, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, I, I'm here to present the amended Forestville electric power system budget for 2016. Before I get into the numbers and specifics you have, I just wanna talk a little bit about what had drove us to amend the budget, which is, I think, not a particularly normal thing. Beginning of this year, which is our fiscal year, we had identified 623 poles in our system that were at risk, meaning that they had been identified, that, that these were poles that were in bad condition, that were, you know, potentially could fall over, break and, and cause damage, injury, or worse, because you know, we have a pipeline at the top. So presented this to the board and asked them to consider amending the budget, which they ultimately approved. But one of the reasons that we got to this position was that with all of the oil field growth, we really spent a lot of time invested in, you know, extending our, our system to our customers, which is a priority, but it, it led to neglect here. So as we're going through this, we've identified, we found that about fifty percent of these poles would be done with a capital budget, about fifty percent would be done out of maintenance budget or operating budget. So when I'm talking here, it'll be just, just from the operating budget perspective, we didn't change the capital budget. We have two contract crews from a chain electric contractor doing these replacements, they've been doing this since the beginning of, since last quarter of last year, continuing through now. Through the month of April, which is the last month we closed financially, we've done three hundred and eighty-nine and six hundred and twenty-three poles, it's some good success there. If I could direct your attention to page two of the handout. We amended, the, the board amended the budget, or Phelps has a reserve and repair account that only the board can authorize. Seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars was, was taken out of that account that had a balance of eight hundred thousand and put into the operating budget. That shows up under distributions heading here, under the line of system maintenance, which is about the line down in, in your handout. If you looked under the two, 2016 budget column, you'll see a figure of two point seven zero three million dollars. All seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars went to that, that part of the budget. So it increased just this one item here, and of course, the bottom line by seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars as well. That, all of that money is earmarked towards replacing these poles. So that in addition to roughly three hundred thousand, we already had in this account for, for that, we're spending a million dollars out of the operating budget for pole replacement. Any questions so far?
That should be a saving in the long run.
It will be a savings in the long run, absolutely. It's a significant investment on, at this point in time, in short term.
Will there be any questions, Mr. Duke?
What's the plan of timeframe, did you know, do y'all have a format there, in a poll? A poll areas, you gonna hit first?
Uh, the polls are scattered all over the place, so there's, there's clumps here and there, but they're, they're throughout the system, that these six hundred and twenty-three have been vetted. We're, we're tact, the, they have kinda grading system of which is the worst pro, the, the highest priority versus the lowest priority, so we're tactically in that work, the highest priority first, don't actually go over the whole ones.
Are we in those in-house, or are you contracting?
No, we're contracting specifically for this. And if we were to try to do this with our crews, they're capable of doing it, but that would consume their time completely, they would have no time for line extensions and other things, and so in order to do it timely, felt like using a contractor was the best method.
Are we short on manpower, or?
I, I wouldn't say we're short on manpower, no, it's just an extraordinary project, I mean, this is a peak.
No, I understand. That's why I was asking, I didn't know, they are gonna do like fifty poles every month or?
They're, they're averaging, actually, around fifty pole, twenty-five to fifty poles a month at this stage, so since we've done three hundred and eighty-nine and six hundred and twenty-three, we're about sixty percent finished, four months into the year, so we're, we'll finish it this year.
How long does it take?
Well, I, I would, we don't have a definitive timeline, but I would say, you know, we ought to be done by the September timeframe, at, at the rate we're gonna go, assuming we don't have storms like we've just, just experienced.
I know we lost a lot of poles here at one time.
Yes, sir.
In the scratch storm, but I, I didn't know if, you know, we're just gonna take it in stages and maybe do it in-house, and maybe save some more money, or, or hire a couple extra people to, to.
Right, they, like I said, we have chain electric as a contractor on board, we've given this project to them, to, you know, this is what they're doing, is pole replacements on, at this stage, other than emergency, although we need a service law. When they get approved, that, if we have other work, we might use them, if we don't, then we release the contract. Other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Duke.
Thank you.
Financials, by our comptroller, Ms. Moreno, financials from April 2016, revenue expense and fund balances and sales tax report.
Good evening, councilmen, and I would like to take the opportunity to welcome the new council. For your information, my name is Carrie Moreno, and I'm the city comptroller. I'm gonna go ahead and report the, the major funds for the city. Those major funds are general fund, fund three oh one, which is on the top of your spreadsheet, and I'm gonna also, also, give you the opportunity, if you feel that I need to change anything on this form, I always give these opportunities to new council, so that way, if I can make it easier for you to do it. Current revenues year-to-date are two million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and fourteen, total expenditures two thousand, three hundred and twenty-four and three oh four, leaving us a percentage year-to-date of about fifty-six percent of what was taken for the, for the entire year. For water fund, revenues are eight, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand and thirty-eight dollars. Expenditures year-to-date are six hundred and eighty and four hundred and seventy-one dollars, giving us forty-eight percent. Expenditures over budget, wastewater fund, fund two two two, year-to-date revenue is five hundred and eight, two thousand, five hundred and fifteen. Current expenditures is five hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine, giving us a percentage of forty-five percent. On the bottom of the page, I have a summary of taxes collected, sales tax, and I have been keeping a close eye on these, because it's been fluctuating in the period of seven months, there's only one month that we had a very slight increase on sales tax. This month, it went back down. The sales tax collected, total as a whole, it was two hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight. The city allocation was a hundred and twelve thousand, one twenty-nine, giving us a decrease of one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars compared to the prior April of 2015. This give us year-to-date a decrease of sixty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty for the year. Considering that we estimate, estimate collecting in between one million, two hundred and fifty to one million, five hundred dollars, five hundred thousand on sales tax, this is a very low decrease, but still, we're still keeping an eye on it.
What you mean, a very low decrease, you're talking about a very minimal?
Very minimal decrease, yes.
Just for clarification.
Do you have any question?
Ms. Moreno, on the street maintenance fund. As Judge Kennedy mentioned a while ago, we were looking at Railroad Street to do, but according to the, the work, and maybe David can tell me more of this, but it looked like the, the project was gonna take more on Railroad Street than we anticipated. What, what will be available this summer to work on that street?
Okay, if you look on your fund balance count, which is to your right-hand side, we begin the year with eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in fund balance. And then so far, we have spent two hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine thirty, out of that we skirt, that's not including the revenue that we've been getting.
Right.
Okay, so more or less by the end of 2015, 2016, I estimate that we're gonna be getting about five hundred and forty thousand dollars on fund balance.
Okay, so we'll have that five forty plus a two fourteen? Or total five, five forty?
Well, we estimated that we were gonna collect eight hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in sales tax revenue.
Right.
And we have only collected two hundred and fourteen because of the decrease, and we're already at seventy, uh, seven months. So I think we're gonna be, we're gonna end up collecting only like about six hundred thousand dollars. So we're talking about six hundred added to the five hundred and forty thousand.
So maybe in forty?
I, I will estimate about a million. Because it's, the, the, the project started so late within the year, some of the funds that we allocated for this project are not gonna be totally spent until October first, after October first.
Okay, and then that, we receive that funds quarterly?
Yes.
So if we would start a project either this summer, or even wait till next summer, we're talking about maybe in five at least?
More or less, yes.
Any other questions, council?
If there's no more questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to address, Carrie, on the streets department. Have you made any adjustments to the office supplies since last time I told you?
Oh, absolutely.
I see none?
I do adjustments, budget adjustments every month on every line item within its department. Streets department do not use any office supplies, funds. If they use anything, it will be like those clipboards, they are plastic that they carry, where they carry around their paperwork, and I just bought them, I said, I wanna say about a year ago.
So?
So there hasn't been any expenditures this year. Now, we have a lot of expense, uh, supply in the fund, what we provide to them, pencils, pens, rulers, whatever they need, there is office supplies. Towards the end of the, the year, that's when they start, you know, if they start going low on their supply, that's when they start purchasing.
So why do we have this item on the budget if, if they don't use it?
Sir, it's very low, it's three hundred dollars.
I understand that, but here in the books, it shows three hundred, and they haven't used a cent.
They haven't used a cent, yeah, because we, we try to supply most of what they need, we are only purchase items that are, you know, big items that we cannot provide because we have.
I understand that, but we're spending money that, that, that is not shown here. We're taking it from somewhere.
From other departments, yes, general fund.
But why, why have it here then? The, the three hundred, that's, that's, that's the bottom line. Why, why not just erase the supplies out?
Okay.
Zero and then put it over there?
Absolutely, we can do that when we go through the budget workshop, and I think we have done that with water and sewer departments last year, that they had their own, the administration department or department of each fund had their office supplies plus the department. For example, water and sewer, they had the administration department and water and sewer department.
Correct.
They both had office supplies, but the pros and the cons, we're purchasing most of it, or everything, out of the administration department. So the mayor addressed that in the workshop, so what we did is we consolidate all of these. And I just don't wanna, you know, speak wrong about it, but these line items were already there, and we're getting rid of them as we see the need to get rid of them. If we see that they're not using them, and then we'll take them.
They're not since, since October, since October the first?
They are, you're saying they are using them?
They're using them towards the end, but.
But you're pulling out of the general fund to.
Right.
Yes, yeah. And once.
But line, line items is good, so that way you keep track of everything, who's, what expenditures is going to?
Yeah.
To what office?
It, it takes longer for me to go ahead and allocate a purchase of a pencil to each department, or pens to each department, they just put in it all in administration department. And then when they need something big like the clipboards or something other than, it's more expensive, that we cannot supply it through general fund or through administration, and then we charge it to the department.
Well, as long as you keep track, so that way.
That's the reason for the line item, so we can keep track who's using and who's not using.
Because now the general fund, where everybody gets their hand in the cookie jar, you never know what's, what's going where, or what's, what's happening, so.
And in practice, that's what was happening, and I think, you know, every year that we go through the budget, I've been separating all of that and allocating it correctly.
That's good. Thank you.
Ms. Moreno?
Yes, sir.
The credit cards statement was in the packet here?
Yes.
Is that part of your report, or did you wanna mention anything about this?
Well, if you want me to go ahead and, and let you know, but I was asked to just put these together for your information, and if you have any questions for me to answer. But these, now that we're talking about it, these are the credit cards that the city has.
Okay.
And every time that there's a change on a department, it is very wise to change the name of the employee that that, that credit card was assigned to. That doesn't mean that that employee was carrying that credit card. That doesn't mean that that employee was carrying that credit card on their pocket. I have in my office a file cabinet that is locked where I have all the credit cards. It doesn't matter, even the city manager's credit card I have in there. When it's needed, I have a lock. When they go and request these credit cards, I take, I release it. And then when they bring it back, they sign it back in. So that way I keep track of the credit cards. But because there was a change in my department of staff, I needed to change that was part of the credit card.
When the mayor and city manager sign off on payments, do we have a description of how the credit cards are being used?
Previously, and I just found that out during the audit, these payments were being done electronically. Once I found out, I said, no, we cannot do that. We have to do checks because one is traceable. When you do an electronic payment through the system, it assigns a check number that is 00000. So every month, you're going to have a check number for that number. So when we're looking for checks for them to be tested by the audit, we don't have an actual check number, so we don't know what to pull out. So I changed that. Now, the person that is doing accounts payable, she releases a check, she issues a check, and we immediately go to the bank and make the payment instead of sending it through the mail and will take longer to be paid.
But that wasn't your question?
No, when I'm talking about, and Mr. Ortiz and Mr. Emaneskin can also remember this, is that years ago, if there was a bill, the council would look at all the bills and look at what needs to be paid. Remember that?
Yes.
Remember that point?
Yes, sir.
When we're looking at this credit card, let's say Sam's credit card, does anybody see with signing authority what we're purchasing at Sam's or what we're purchasing at Tractor Supply?
I can...
If not, can we get into that practice?
Oh.
Is that something we could ask Chris?
Oh, absolutely. It's already been done.
Well, that's accounts payable.
Previously, it wasn't, and it's like I said, I've been changing things little by little as I find them.
Okay.
I know for a fact that now it's sent to the city manager and to the mayor to be signed. And there is a statement from the credit card with all the invoices attached to it. And now they have a check number.
We can say, okay, there was a lawnmower purchase there and we will see that there was a lawnmower purchase for $200 there at Tractor Supply.
Yes, now again.
They should be submitting receipts for every purchase.
Yes.
They should have a physical receipt.
Before, Chris, it was happening, she was putting all that receipts together, but I cannot say that she actually took it to the mayor to, so she will review it because the payments were done electronically and I was sending, walking the checks to the mayor.
So was, the receipts weren't attached to the invoice, didn't everything?
That is what's saying on the file. On the file, we have the statement with the receipts. But did the mayor look at them? I can add this to that because I don't know.
I think that's what the mayor pretended like.
Previously.
No, what?
Previously, since January, that's been happening.
I believe the question is, everything that's being bought...
And purchased.
And purchased should have accountability for what is...
Correct.
Yes.
And now it does. We have a check number, we have the statement.
When did this change take place?
Excuse me?
When is this change, when did this change take place?
It took place in between January of 2016 to March, 2016.
Wow, so before that, there was no accountability?
Yes, because I do see it on the files, they're there. But it's like I said, I didn't actually walk those checks to the mayor and the city manager. So I cannot say, yes, that happened.
Chris, how do we put that on our agenda as a monthly report? We receive all payments that are being paid for the month.
We can do that as a directive, we can do that as a procedural thing. If you want to have it to direct the city staff to every month present those, I would recommend doing it as a council directive.
Okay.
And how it can be a formal city policy that this is what happened.
Is there, what do you all think?
And we can't do a CNA, I don't want to do a CNA.
To have a line item every month, that's going to be, that's going to be taking away from a lot of things.
Um, yes. I do know that I can create a report that I can go ahead and provide to you with all, everything that has been paid for the month. That it correlates with the financials. Just as I've been also including balance sheets on the financials. So that is something that it can be done and all you have to do is ask for it.
Okay, do you think outside of the credit cards is done with a purchase order?
Yes, even the credit cards.
Even the credit cards?
Yes, even when they, because that's something that I implemented back in, I want to say was October of 2014, when I did, that they had to sign out the credit card. That they have to have a purchase order every time that they release a credit card. So on the log for the credit cards, I have a purchase order number assigned to each purchase.
Any other questions, council?
And then this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Robles?
Yes, sir. The question I was going to ask Connie on that one, we talked about the electric bill, the $1 that came up, is that in here?
Yes, Mr. Robles, you want to address the recreational fee?
Want me to address?
Please.
I put together a memo for council that I don't know if it's going to be made available for the public, but on the memo I state that for the fiscal year 2015 ending, on September 2015, we had revenues of $30,017,83. For that year, there was no expenditures. For the year of 2016, we budgeted, on the budget workshops, $25,000 for parts repairs. And then later on in the year, I want to say it was in February when we came in with the budget amendment, we amended $47,767, giving us an expenditure budget of $72,767. That will give us a remainder fund balance at the end of 2016
Thank you.
Also, I have another question, cemetery. Who did you charge the cemetery and why cemetery they got so much money and like partial having that money here? Cemetery funds, it's got $85,000.
That's been a carryover balance, the budget, we only budgeted $10,000.
Correct.
That's been a carryover from year to year.
But that money is used for what, for maintenance?
For maintenance of the cemetery, water lines, cutting the grass, fence repair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, council, before I move on to new business, with your consent, with your permission, I'm going to go into executive session 4A. If there's no objections, council, pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney to discuss people in locations of alleged burial in the wrong plot of the city cemetery and issues related to corporate ownership of such plot. Can we have a motion to that play, council?
So move.
Motion by Ortiz, second by Duke, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we're going to go into closed session. It is 7:40 with consultation with our attorney and other citizens that are involved.